Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee Meeting. It's Wednesday, February 8th, 2023, 6:00 PM. We're at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street in Greenfield. GCTV is recording this meeting and we'll move right into the agenda with a roll call and call to order. Mayor Wiedegartner, I believe, is absent tonight. Member Wall?
Here.
And Chair Parrietti, I am here. Member Ekstrom, Vice Chair Ekstrom, I'm sorry, Secretary Ekstrom, she is also not here. Member Johnson Musad?
Here.
Vice Chair Martini?
Here.
And Member Denise?
Here.
We have five members present, which is a quorum, and I call the meeting to order at 6:01. And moving right into the fun part of the meeting, we have a couple of induction into the Mass Coaches Association Hall of Fame, and there's others at the table who know him much better than I do, so I'm going to pass it over to the superintendent to start.
Well, I know I don't know you the best, but I won and I get to talk. So, we offer congratulations to our athletic director and football coach, Mike, on being named to the Massachusetts High School Football Association Hall of Fame. Coach K has been a part of Greenfield's success on and off the field since he was a student here. He returned in 2004, winning a total of 137 games with Greenfield and with the co-op team. He helped get off the ground in 2020, including wins that led the team to the 2021 state tournament. Most importantly, though, he's always put our students first, focusing and helping them develop into the best young adults they can be. In Coach K's own words, "We don't coach for the wins and losses. We coach to create young men and women and create memories for them." So, Coach K, if I can have you stand up for a second?
We didn't think flowers were the most appropriate thing for you, so...
We have a trophy that we had created tonight that reads "Coach Kecheski in honor of your induction into the Mass High School Football Association Hall of Fame, and it is the greatest of all time, the Air Bowl Club of Gold.
Any words for all of us, Coach? Why don't you step up to the mic there? You can even pick it up and walk around with it if you're so inclined.
That'd be like Dean Martin. I'm pretty humbled for this. As most people know, I wear my heart on my sleeve. And, you know, one of the best administrators I ever had said it best, that you're not old, you're vintage. And that's kind of how I've looked at this. I've lasted a long time. 1988 is when I started, and there's a gentleman in this room that I had as a coach that is well-deserving of his baseball Hall of Fame and that I've looked up to since 1981, when I first met him coaching. And there's many more throughout this, throughout my career, that there's not enough time that I can thank them for the things that they've instilled in me. It was, it's been a very, very long ride and it's not over. The ups and downs of coaching athletes, teaching athletes, has been absolutely incredible. You know, when we first started, it was all about the wins and losses. And as you go through the course of your career, you realize that it's not about the wins and losses, it's about the kids that come back and say thank you, or the things you read about kids and past students and how well they're doing. And that's why we do what we do. And that's, it's been a very, very good run. And Greenfield High School, Greenfield Public Schools, has been a huge part of my career. I was living in Naples, Florida, and I came back to Greenfield, Massachusetts, so that just tells you what Greenfield means to me. If you've ever been to Naples, it's absolutely gorgeous. But, but I thank you very much for the recognition and I'm humbled, and I don't like recognition. I don't do it for that. I just thank you very much. I'm very humbled. Appreciate it.
Well, we're very glad you came back from Florida. And thank you. Next on the agenda, sorry, this is going to be a thing for a while. The, our next good news, the Greenspoon Excellence in Teaching Award winners.
We have two Greenspoon Award winners this year for Greenfield Public Schools, and we're honored to have both of them here this evening. I think we'll do one at a time, just so that we can recognize them and they can have their moment in the spotlight. Our first award winner this year is Deborah Richardson from Federal Street, so if she could come to the front table, that would be great. Both of our award winners this year had multiple nomination submissions from their colleagues. The Greenspoon Award for the Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching, folks are nominated by their colleagues, and Deb had multiple submissions. One colleague said, quote, "She is an amazing kindergarten teacher who is a wonderful resource for other teachers. She has a special touch for working with children who need extra love and extra patience. Spending countless hours researching and creating activities that help foster children's love of learning, Deb brings the fun to learning." Another nomination from her colleague said, "You don't come across a teacher so talented and inspiring as Deb very often. She has a way of motivating her students with high expectations, that they are engaged and want to do their best. She loves her students and is present with them in each moment. I find myself wanting to be better too, when around her. I've had the ultimate privilege of visiting Deb's class many times this year and can attest to the absolute truth to these statements. She is phenomenal. I know Principal Halpin is here to congratulate you as well, but the superintendent and myself also congratulate you."
Oh, please say a few words for all of us.
I'm just very humbled and to be working in Greenfield. I'm just blessed to get to work with kids every day in such wonderful families. The kids are amazing and to get to do what I love to do every day. I always tell my families, I love what I do. And to get to be paid to do it, you know, you don't truly work if you love what you do, and the kids are just amazing, so, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Our next award winner is Ms. Shannon Eaton from the Greenfield Middle School. Shannon was also a multiple nomination for this year's award. One colleague said Shannon is, quote, "A true gem in Greenfield Middle School. She creates a safe, positive, supportive classroom environment and is able to strike that extremely challenging balance of a rigorous academic environment with high expectations, while also helping students feel like things are fun and welcoming. Shannon goes above and beyond to accommodate all students." Another submission reflects that Shannon is always looking to improve her practice and naturally knows what is good for learning and for students. Students feel heard and cared for in Shannon's class, and no one goes unnoticed. She is a very positive and upbeat colleague and a true team player. I've known Shannon a long time, when I was an AP at the middle school, and then as now in my role here, visiting with our Amplify rollout, and she is fantastic. She has a student teacher from Bridges underneath her and learning all of the tricks of the trade from this master, so congratulations, Shannon. Very proud of you.
Thank you. So I guess I have to speak publicly.
Yes, please.
It's a little different than being in my classroom. My heart's pounding, but I do feel pretty honored to be recognized. I definitely don't do it alone. I have a lot of other awesome colleagues who apparently nominated me, and I have IAs and building monitors, and my administration has been really supportive. And as Deb said, the kids are pretty amazing too, so that's why we do it. Thank you. Should I push the button?
Yes, congratulations, thank you. Really terrific. Awesome to start the meeting with three such amazing things for the district, and thank you all for your hard work on behalf of our students, because that's really what it's all about. And I'm sorry for the whiplash, but we're moving right into the budget update for the evening. Andy?
I don't know what you mean, whiplash. I still consider this part the fun part of the agenda, so... You have in your packets the updates as of February 1st. No real big highlights, other than if you look and see, there is a balance showing in the local general fund budget, but we have been meeting regularly with administrators, in particular, special education, Dr. Dickinson. We've got some contracted service expenses that are going to be eating into that, and then also will be doing some reclassing of things out of, if you look at some of the revolving accounts, they're showing negative balances as of right now, so if those revenues don't come to fruition, we'll be moving those expenses back to the local. I can answer any questions that you might have, but it's as usual, and it's going to be tight this year.
Any questions from the committee for Mr. Paquette? Our questioners are absent. Well, that was easy. Thank you, Andy.
And I don't need to be hugged after this, that's all you know.
Do you want us to clap for you?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, and next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from our January meeting, which was on the 11th. I would take a motion at this time to approve the minutes from that meeting.
So moved.
That was Vice Chair Martini in a second.
Second.
Second from Member Wall. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, are there any abstentions from approving the minutes? Any no votes? So those pass unanimously. Thank you. And we're on to public comment. Susan Farber, we have a public comment. We have a bunch of people. Great, okay. Whoever is first? Come on up. You just have to kind of hold the button until the light turns green on that caller there, and just state your name and where you live, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Okay. Hi, my name is Katie Pierce, and I'm a resident of Greenfield. I homeschool my son, Michael Pierce, and I am here to advocate for him. We are fast approaching the baseball season, and the reality that he will not be allowed to play on his beloved baseball high school team is right in front of us. Michael is a junior in high school and has been playing for Greenfield since the seventh grade, and he has been an essential part of the team. We also have been paying taxes in Greenfield for 18 years. Faced with not being able to finish out his high school baseball career, we are put in a very unfortunate situation, especially with college baseball recruiting underway. Anyone who knows Michael knows that baseball is a way of life for him. The school committee voted to exclude homeschoolers from athletics based on, and I know other things as well, based on money and liability. Every single athlete participant has to have extensive signed liability forms, which I do take very seriously. I do ask the school committee to please, please reconsider their decision after hearing the negative effects that this decision has made for Michael, his family, his teammates, and his coaches. Michael has been a top fundraiser for the team. He has attended most practices and games over all those years. He is a leader. But most importantly, and this is where, you know, it tears at my heart, he has been put through stress because of all of this. He feels as if, he feels as if he has let his teammates down, and that's not his fault. If reconsidering this vote is not an option, I plead that you consider grandfathering him in until he graduates, just two seasons, since he has already been a part of the team for so long. So please help us to remedy this difficult situation. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Pierce. I live in Greenfield, Massachusetts, and I have been playing for Greenfield ever since seventh grade. Yeah, I've been playing for Greenfield ever since seventh grade, and I've been playing longer than everyone who's on Greenfield baseball right now. And I've made many friends on the team, and even brothers. And this year, I was really hoping to become a leader. And, yeah, this year, I was really hoping to become a leader. And I only have two more years left of baseball. And I know it's not my fault, but like my mom said, I'd, it would feel like I'd be letting my team down and my coaches. And I was just hoping that you would reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Johnny Marchewka. I live in Greenfield, Massachusetts, and I am one of Michael's good friends. I just would really hope you reconsider this whole decision. I mean, for most of the reasons that they just said. I mean, he's been playing since seventh grade, and part of our friendship has been built through all these years of playing together, you know? And I don't think there's a single kid on the team that would say that Michael's not a great person, not a good kid, you know? He's always supporting teammates, always, you know, building up our team, and he's proven to be a vital asset for our success. And this year, our team being very young, because we only, we'll have one senior if he can make the injury recovery, and about four juniors, well, without him, that would be three. It's very important that, you know, we have someone like him, who's been a friend, a leader, you know, and an example for all the younger kids to, you know, try to build a baseball team in the future. And then, not only that, something that wasn't said is he also plays golf for the school, and next year, we will have six people total on the golf team if Michael plays. In order to have a full team, you have six. Without Michael, we'll have five, so that's not even enough to have a full team. So without that, I mean, we'd lose, we'd still be able to play, but we'd lose an automatic four points every single game. And it just, it would really hurt the team, and it would really hurt everybody's just emotions, because Michael's just been such a good friend, such a good teammate, and, you know, I don't think there's a single person that wouldn't say he's a great person. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Sushnick, resident of Greenfield. Thirty-plus years of teaching, coaching, athletic director. And I spoke to you, I don't even know how long ago, a month, six weeks. Just a real quick review of the MIA. Twenty-five, about 25 years ago, the MIA had the rule, homeschoolers could not participate. It was unchallenged by a family, taken to court, MIA quickly changed the rules. So it's been approximately 25 years that rule was in place, that you could participate. I don't know why it's taken us 25 years to come to this point. Last night, I had the experience of going to a high school varsity basketball game. It was a great game. Team A won the first time around during the season. Team B won very late in the game. Crowd was great, it was a great atmosphere. And as all the kids are excited after the game's over, I'm standing there and I'm thinking, what if a player from either team was denied the opportunity to play in that game, never mind the rest of the season, the playoffs? That would be something that, to have memories, experiences, that you'd never be able to Coach Kecheski, who played for me many moons ago, and I congratulated him on making the Football Coaches Hall of Fame. He not only put a feather in his cap, but Greenfield High School, as well as Greenfield, the community of Greenfield. 1984, which kind of dates him a little bit. He was on a team that was very good. They had a great season, and they went to the state finals. And I can tell you right now, if Mike was denied that, I can tell you, he had many experiences that he would not have had the opportunity to experience back then. Area schools, Athol, Marhur, Turner's Falls, Pioneer, Mohawk, Frontier, that we all compete against in a variety of sports, all allow homeschoolers to participate. I was recently at a coaches clinic, and I know a bunch of coaches from the Springfield area, I think I talked to five. They all allow homeschoolers to participate. Also, one of the speakers from Ohio, and one from the Carolinas, I spoke to both of those two coaches. The areas that they're in, as long as you're a resident in that community, you can participate. The biggest thing, I think, is if kids lose out and don't have the opportunity to participate, not necessarily just athletics, it could be in the band, it could be in a play, whatever. I really think we're losing out when we don't allow kids to be part of that experience. And you know what? When kids are in high school, you only go around once. And once you graduate, you can't come back to experience those things. It's gone. I tell kids all the time, play as many sports, get into the activities at the school as you can, because you only are there one time. So please, give this some serious consideration, because you really, really can affect kids' lives. And with all the COVID stuff, kids missed out for a year, you know, I don't even think we know the impact of all that at this point. But it's very important, because a lot of lessons that you don't learn in the classroom, you can learn out there, being with a group, whatever it might be, athletics, the band, a play, whatever, so please.
Coach, I need you to wrap it up. Your three minutes is up.
Give it some serious consideration, because I think you're making a big mistake.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Sure, come on up.
Not a great speaker, but...
Just state your name and where you live.
Alex Sayano, Verde Drive, Greenfield, Massachusetts. And I just want to point one thing out, that we live in a different world now, and there's a lot of kids who, who homeschool for different reasons. Not, they would like to be in that setting, but they can't function in that environment. Maybe they can't be a 180-day student, that's why some go to the tech. There's different reasons why they're not in school. But if they can get that social interaction, like Coach Sushnick said, from band, debate club, whatever it is, that does help them feel connected to the community and feel part of something. And I don't think they have that opportunity outside of high school and college and certain things in other parts of their lives. So by letting them be part of that team, or that club, or that activity, you're really bringing them into their, their community. And sometimes I think homeschool kids can feel very isolated. And I know that someone will say, well, go to school then, but like I said, there are reasons, and it's not just about not liking a certain curriculum or a certain setting. It's really about them being able to function in that environment is why they're not there. Thank you very much, and you guys do a great job, you have a very hard job to do, and you guys do do it well, and you're always getting yelled at by a lot of people, but you guys do a good job. Have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Thank you all, we appreciate your comments. Next is the report of our student representatives to the committee. Go ahead, guys.
Hello. So we're going to start with Student Council, as per usual. The Student Council's been very busy in the past few months. We had two teams come in on their day off of school to attend the Special Olympic Spachi Tournament, and last Friday, a group of students traveled to the WMASC Roundtable, where they exchanged ideas with students from 11 other schools from around Western Mass. Students traveling to MASC are getting their workshops and costumes ready and are still accepting donations for their polar plunge, and will have a trivia night on Friday, February 17th, at 6:00 at The Moose, to help offset the cost of the trip. The event is for adults 21 and over, and if you would like to play or donate, please contact Mrs. Mass.
Next item will be Key Club. Key Club is sponsoring a food drive and grocery giveaway for GHS families this week, or the week of February 13th to 17th. We are also making Valentines for patients at St. Jude's Children's Hospital, and hosting an opportunity for GHS students to do the same. Additionally, on Valentine's Day, we will be placing Valentine cards all over GHS, whichever anyone can give to a teacher, peer, colleague, or family member.
Our winter sports teams are coming to an end of their seasons. State rankings for the team are as follows. Boys' basketball is ranked 22nd in Division V. Girls' basketball is 39th. Ice hockey is 22nd in Division IV. The Western Mass Tournament starts February 18th with the state tourney starting the 25th. We have two indoor track athletes who made the Division V state tournament, Deion Brewington in the shot put and Jackson Karen in the mile. They will run at the Reggie Lewis Center on February 16th. Go Green Wave.
Next will be Spectrum Club. Spectrum is working on planning a workshop for the Access Franklin County Conference at GCC in March. We are also looking forward to baking for our bake sale after school next week. French Club recently, oh, French Club now, French Club recently enjoyed after-school ice skating with the Spanish Club. We are looking forward to Taste of World College Jewellery in March and our trip to Quebec in April. This month, we are selling raffle calendars to help fund our trip, as well as our annual tradition of Valentine candy grams.
The library has recently received our order of new books for the year. Students are excited to be able to choose from over 150 new books, including bestsellers, award winners, new installments of popular series, manga, graphic novels, and plenty of nonfiction. The final book to movie night for this year is this Friday, and we will be showing Where the Crawdads Sing, and copies of the book are available for borrowing from the library. Doors open at 5:30 PM in popcorn and the mov, ah, open at 5:30 PM for pizza and popcorn, and the movie begins at 6:00. Family and communities are welcome to attend.
Next is Green Room. The Green Room continues to provide meaningful and enriching after-school activities for GHS students. Our three esports teams are about to begin their fourth season of competing in both Splatoon and Rocket League in the Play VS Interscholastic Esports League. They will compete weekly against other high schools from all over the country throughout the spring. Our Gamesmithing Club will be launching three Dungeons and Dragons campaigns in this month and will continue into April break.
Spanish Club continues to prepare for their trip to Puerto Rico in April and are excited in getting ready to start a Hillside Pizza fundraiser for that trip. Last week, 15 members went ice skating at the ring with the French Club, and they have begun preparations for Taste of World Cultures, which will be taking place in March, and last month, they...
And last month, they enjoyed cookie-making fun.
NHS had a successful and rewarding month in December with our volunteer work with the Adopt a Family program. We have adopted two small families to provide a happy holiday, as well as volunteered at the church to do some heavy lifting to make the program a success. More recently, we have been hosting a touring hour every Thursday, which is still open to all GHS students, and we have plenty of opens, openings for students in need of help with schoolwork. Uh, we have created our team for the Relay for Life, and the plans for that event are underway. Our members continue to volunteer at all basketball games to run the concession stand. We were hoping to get out to the elementary schools for some reading with time.
The Yellow Conference was a big success, with about 30 students and some day elected officials, um, discussing local economic development, transportation, and school-related issues. Many students noted how great it was to have their voices heard, to share ideas with each other and local leaders, and simply to have a forum for open discussion. We've begun to see some surveys and communications circling to follow up on some of the issues discussed, particularly in regards to GHS.
Other important things at GHS. In the fall, GHS was invited to return to, uh, to the roster of NEPMs as Schools Match Wits program. After decades of not participating, um, this 60-plus-year-old program, a one-to-two high school quiz show, airs on Saturday evenings. ASMW has Massachusetts high school teams compete against each other in their, in areas of academic knowledge. The GHS team is led by Devra Putney, Nick Fouchet, and Tara Cludier. We have been meeting weekly with our team of four, including Caitlin, Luke, and Shane, Lydia, and Lydia, to prepare, study, and strategize. We had a great time at our film taping on January 28th at Westfield State University, and we are, have been asked to be a part of the ASMW permanent roster. Happily, all students, except for Caitlin, are juniors or sophomores, so they will be able to return next year. It was a new experience for this team, but they had fun. Our match against Pioneer Christian Academy will be aired on April 29th on NEPM. And next, on Friday, March 24th, S.E. Chambers, a GHS class of 1989, will attend an all-school assembly and share clips from the movie, uh, Descent. Miss Chambers was a producer of this documentary, which follows members of Africa Town, a small community in Alabama, as they share their personal stories and community history as descendants from Gloutoria, the last known slave ship to illegally transport human beings as cargo from Africa to America.
All right, this one is me talking for a little while, so brace yourself. Um, yesterday, February 7th, GHS held its quarterly honor roll ice cream social to celebrate the academic achievement of all students who placed in high honors and highest honors. Students filed into the cafeteria accordance with their grade, and at the end of the day, enjoyed ice cream, as well as spending time with friends. Last week, students began to collect signatures from current teachers and AP teachers in order to confirm which AP classes they wish to take in the coming school year. In the next few weeks, standard course selection will begin as well for the 2023 to 24 school year. After a survey was sent to students via email proposing a shift in schedule, a proposal is being floated to adjust the current weekly schedule to include more days in which students will have periods one through seven, rather than even or odd days. When that survey was sent, the majority of students wished to keep the current schedule that we have and are resistant to a change. This new proposed plan would also hinder students' ability to attend dual enrollment classes at GCC and attend other out-of-building activities during the day. Those steps were taken in beginning to reopen bathrooms to students over the course of the last few weeks, and some facilities were made available to students once more. Bathroom use once again has been limited. After misconduct and improper use has continued, various bathrooms throughout the building have been temporarily closed, leaving options available to students growing slimmer. Just today, an occurrence transpired in which a significant fixture in the boys' bathroom in the history and foreign language hallway was damaged, resulting in the closing of that bathroom for what seems to be the foreseeable future. Although it appears that an effort is being made to make these facilities accessible once more, the continued shutting down of options has continued to make it a challenge for students to have easy access when they need it. The continued damage and severe overcrowding of bathrooms makes use of them challenging for many students. It is understandable that this is a GHS issue, but we feel it is important to present, given that it has been a recurring issue for over a year now, and has still remained where we were at the beginning of the previous school year last year. Uh, that covers everything we have. We'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you both. Uh, I have a question, and then I'll turn it over to the committee. Are you the Shane that's on the As Schools Match Wits?
I am, yes.
I've watched that program for longer than I would like to admit, so I, I think it's great that Greenfield's there again. Awesome. Good luck to you all. Questions from the committee? No? Thank you both very much.
All right, we will move into the reports from the administration, starting with ASKP. Please.
Thank you. Um, an update on the DESI High Quality Professional Learning Network for High School Math. We had a meeting actually this morning. We are now in the investigate and select portion. The high school has determined their top two field test choices of illustrative math and reveal math. The high school teachers began the field test this past Monday in Algebra I and Geometry. That field test will last for three weeks, and then on or about March 13th, they will field test reveal math. Teachers and students are asked to complete feedback rubrics with each lesson that's implemented, and those rubrics align with the district's parameters and priorities. And then after we field test both, we'll look at the data and then determine what is best for the district moving forward with a launch in the fall. We had a district-wide professional development day on Friday, the 27th of January. We had many sessions, which were on a lot of the new curriculums that we've adopted this year. We also had, um, some special education workshops, and Superintendent DeBarge actually ran a workshop with all of our unified arts teachers. Overall, the staff feedback and was very positive and appreciative of all the offerings that we had that day. Library news, we are still plugging along at the preschool, um, slow but sure. Uh, our volunteer has, uh, taken some time to warm her weather, so we look forward to her return soon, so we can finish up that project. As we are completing the weeding, though, we have met with faculty at ALN, we're determining next steps as a group, along with Nancy Putnam, the principal. In grant news, um, the Yellow Conference that Shane discussed, I, um, had the privilege of hopping over to the high school to visit while that was ongoing. The civics grant did support the activities that were happening that day. It was great to see our youth engage firsthand with legislators and officials. Um, Title I has been very busy in the last weekend. I really want to shout out to the Greenfield Rec Department and Kristy Moore. Uh, the Winter Carnival was this past weekend, and our Title I program participated in supporting a lot of the family engagement events this past weekend. We were at Sanderson Street Saturday morning, where there was a storyteller, and we were doing giveaways with books and, uh, math activities. We then headed over and we co-sponsored a Laser Mania light show at the Greenfield Middle School Auditorium, which was a huge success. And then Sunday morning, we decided to join Olaf at Adam's Donuts, and we gave, uh, math games and dice, along with a book away with every half dozen donuts that were ordered for our families. And, uh, we were cold, but it was very fun. Um, we also are going to be sponsoring another February break, uh, reading and math challenge for all of our students. And I'm going to make a correction here, because our Title I folks at the high school also want to participate and put the challenge out for our high schoolers. So this challenge will go K through 12, and, um, those information sheets will be handed out by our interventionists in the coming weeks before break. Um, lastly, we, um, just received our, um, DESI report cards for the district, along with individual schools. Those were sent out in a school messenger, uh, by my office with all of the links. Um, and you can find them on our website as well. And it highlights really, uh, multiple measures of what's going on in our school and school performance and attendance and overall teacher qualifications and opportunities. Uh, some of the highlights, though, uh, Greenfield still maintains a very high level of access for arts and digital literacy and computer science classes, which is awesome. Um, in an area of focus that we are well aware of, and we've talked about continuously, is really student attendance and really increasing our attendance, so that students can access their learning. Um, like I said, though, all of those report cards can be read and found on our district webpage, and the links are live. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the committee for ASKP? Please, Vice President Martini.
I have a small pile, sorry. Uh, I wondered...
Did you say small pile of questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay. For the record, small pile of questions.
Um, I wondered if you could, um, just, uh, elucidate for us what, or the main reasons that, um, illustrative math and reveal math were chosen to field test.
Having been the third round in these professional learning networks, I've made a lot of connections with area districts that have very similar, um, demographics to Greenfield, so we've done a lot of pre-work on that end. Um, our priorities and parameters really revolve around, um, student access, um, with regards to our ELL population and intervention, and both of them have a strong component in that area, that not only the core curriculum itself, but they have the support materials that go with it. Another, um, component is really having additional supports if a student is absent. So they do have mini lessons, mini videos, support, um, documents, and also links that students can get if there is a gap with an absence, which we try to address. Um, and lastly, I think really the online component, our high schoolers are pretty savvy. They, they were before COVID, but even after COVID, they're really digital literate, so they really wanted programs that were accessible online, as well as in paper, and both of those, uh, fit that component. So now we're really going to get to the meat of it, though, and see if they don't. Um, and we, there are other choices. So they're really, um, jazzed up about these two and excited, and I've ta, we met with some of them today, and they said that the first three days, students were really engaged and, and excited about the new curriculum. So we'll see what reveal does, and then we regroup and see if we have to pick a third choice. We have time before the end of the school year, so there is, there is a dark horse waiting in the background if these two don't come through, but, um, they're pretty confident that these two met all of our priorities and parameters. And those are also posted on the website as well, and we've presented those to the stakeholders in all of this.
Thank you. Um, that's, um, interesting what you said about, um, resources being built into them for student absences, since we do have an issue with that in the district. Uh, so that certainly seems like it would be, um, helpful. Um, and hopefully being more, um, clued into our online digital kind of environment is also more engaging for students, so that's great. I wonder, um, you mentioned, uh, priorities, uh, in terms of, uh, ELLs, which is English Language Learners, for anybody that doesn't know what that means, and, um, intervention, which would be students who need a little more assistance than the general class. Rephrase that if I did not put that correctly. Um, I wonder if, um, the district is looking at them, uh, with a view to students with disabilities as well? Um, most students in special education are also general education students and are in, um, in class for math most of the time. So, um, are we considering how well these, um, two options might meet the needs of our disabled students?
Absolutely. I mean, that is, we want all of our students to be able to access whatever curriculum we adopt. So that certainly is, and that's part of, I think, the student rubric feedback that we're looking for, and, and that goes for every student in the classroom each day. So, you know, they're going to have a chance to voice their opinions about each curriculum and to see which one actually fits their learning styles. Um, we have looked into that, um, accessibility, though, and differentiation for different learners, but we certainly have, um, the opportunity for students to give their firsthand feedback, too. So we are considering all of those.
Thanks. Um, last one about this, I just wondered if you could, uh, highlight what you consider to be the main differences between illustrative math and reveal math.
I think after the March 13th, uh, field test of reveal, I could do that, a better job of that, not having, um, been in a classroom yet since they just started Monday, and only seeing the middle school version of illustrative. I'd hate to speak to that without actually firsthand visiting those classrooms.
Okay.
So happy to give an update at the March meeting and, and see how they're going between the two, but I'd, I'd hesitate to say that right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, in the piece about professional development, could you explain what Get Set for School is?
That is our new preschool curriculum, so it covers all four content areas and lines with the pre, aligns with the pre-K standards.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Um, what, and I, I noted that there was positive staff feedback, um, about the offerings at the Professional Development Day that was just had. I wondered if there was any feedback from staff about, uh, what would improve the district's PD or what they would like to see next?
Before the year is out, we, uh, my office will do a survey for Title II-A for the funds that actually support teacher development and improvement. Um, we do a yearly one, so that will actually happen hopefully at the May half-day, and we'll ship that out, so that we can collect the data before June. And then when we do our, um, admin retreat, I couldn't think of the word, thank you, when we do our retreat in late June, that's when we usually talk about what, what people want, what time we have for the next school calendar year, and what we can actually implement in the time that we have for professional development.
Okay. Um, that'll be interesting to hear once we get to that point. Um, last one about Title I, um, not about the specific, um, activities that have been, um, carried out recently under it. I was just wondering if we have any defined priorities or goals for the use of our Title I resources? Have we spelled that out somewhere?
The grant is, is provided to the district to address the learning gaps that students with, um, you know, at risk have. So we utilize our grant money to provide additional supports for literacy and math from K through 12. Um, there are different parameters, which I don't have in front of me, about how you can spend the grant funds, but that is how we have been using it and anticipate continuing to do that.
Right, um, I get that. I was, that's a pretty broad umbrella, though, and I was just wondering if the district has gotten more specific about, um, what we want to be targeting or using the resources for, other than to support those students generally?
Or provide an intervention for students who aren't at grade level for literacy or math. That's pretty, that's pretty targeted when you look at all the components of an instructional program. So we look at individual student needs, grade level needs, building needs, and, and work with our resources to address those needs.
Thank you.
Yeah, Member Johnson Musa, go ahead.
Thanks for the report. Um, I guess I, I had a question, and then it kind of launched into a different question. And if you're not prepared tonight, it's fine, but, um, I would just, is the civics grant a state grant, or is that coming from some other source?
It is a state grant.
Okay, and when I came on to the school committee almost four years ago, the state, I think, was introducing new civics standards, and at the time, I thought that we were pretty under-resourced in Greenfield in terms of curriculum leadership. And I don't know really where we landed with that in terms of... And I don't know really where we landed with that in terms of the civics curriculum and where you see us now, and now's not a good night to talk about it. I would love to get an update from you on some point about it.
You must not have been a school committee member at the time. We had to, we actually did a presentation, Luke Martin, Terry Dodge, who was a history teacher at the high school for a long time. We adopted the new civics standards, and we launched an eighth-grade civics course, so all of our eighth-grade students do take civics now. They have to complete the civics project per the state standards. We also have a nine-through-12 civics component where they have to take an additional elective that deals with civic engagement. Luke Martin actually runs a local history elective that he started this semester, and they'll be engaging in civic engagement around town at many sites here, and they have to complete an additional civics project before they graduate in that grades nine through 12 component. So we are on track, we have the curriculum developed, it's implemented, we have the resources available, and every eighth grader gets it, and every ninth-through-12 grader then has to finish another civic engagement component.
Thanks, and just to clarify, I think that it was that at the time, we didn't have an assistant superintendent for curriculum, and so the teachers were having to kind of patch it together and get off to conferences, and it wasn't the rollout that you would most want, but I think, as usual, our teachers stepped forward and helped to make things happen, and then I never really quite heard about, or maybe I heard and then forgot, but about how it ended up getting rolled out, so thank you.
You're all set?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Yeah, go ahead.
I forgot one, sorry. It's on the bottom. I was wondering about how we are gathering information, or if we're gathering information, about the reasons for causes of student absences in the district? Maybe that's a better question for the superintendent.
Well, we would love additional reasons. We get parent phone calls, we get reports often. There are a variety of reasons that families are sharing that students aren't coming to school, so we work with that. We are working to communicate with families more. I think one of the biggest pieces that our administrators, primarily our elementary administrators, are sharing that we want to highlight and continue to focus on is the fact that there is a misstatement around the fact that there are excused and unexcused absences. The Department of Education does not differentiate any reason that a student would be out of school. That is something that can be done at a local level, but when we report presence or absence, it's, are you in or are you not? And all of those days out of school, you know, they have an impact on a student's ability to learn, because if you're not in front of your teacher, then you're missing something. And we recognize, of course, that there are extremely valid reasons why a student would not be in school. Illness, we might have been dealing with some of that in the last couple of years, so certainly legitimate illness. There are, you know, unfortunate circumstances that families deal with potentially, you know, death or serious illness in families. We recognize all of that, but we report to families every day that a child is not in school. So we've been having the opportunity to do a lot of education with families around the impact of every day that is missed, because we have increased the frequency with which we're communicating with families. You know, it's basically every five days that a child's absent, families are getting some communication, whether it's a letter or a phone call, a request to schedule either a virtual, a telephone, or an in-person meeting to talk about the challenges that families are facing in getting students to school. And some things we are very able to help with and able to work with families to increase attendance, and, you know, we're still working with some other families to get them to come in and have the conversation. But it's really that, I think we're increasing with our communication, we are increasing our opportunities to talk to parents about the importance of being in school. So why, it's not really specific when they call and leave a message, you know, in the absentee line or anything like that, so it's really important when the absence is increased that families are willing to talk to the folks that reach out to them from the schools. So it's not really an answer, but that's the best we've got right now, which is one of our challenges, is figuring out why some of the students are not with us. We have some additional resources we put in place that, you know, our principals or our social workers, our nurses are able to talk with families about in terms of, you know, access for transportation and things along those lines that we're hoping will help to address some of those issues.
Thank you. Anyone else from the committee? I feel like I heard you mention Title II-A. Did I make that up? What is that? I've never heard of Title II-A. I don't mind being ignorant either, I've never heard of it.
The ESA grant is three components, Title I, Title II-A, Title IV, and their money's allotted for different uses. Title II-A is for teacher professional development and support, so our mentor program-
Is connected to Title I?
Is connected to Title I.
Oh, I'm fine with that, then. I thought it was a surprise thing. Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. And we can move right into the superintendent report.
All right. Fair warning, it's a little long. So I'm going to skip the first, a good chunk of the first part, because we've already celebrated our staff that have wonderful things to celebrate, so that was wonderful. Another very exciting event is that we have a food truck coming. So apparently, right after I started in Greenfield, I signed a grant application that I had absolutely no recollection of, quite truthfully. But the prior food service director wrote the grant, and Greta informed me a little bit ago that, hey, we got the grant. And I said, well, what grant? That's what happens when it's, you know, when you sign grants in a very exciting time. So the food truck has been created, it has been wrapped, meaning we basically, yeah, we got all the fancy decorations on it, and it is beautiful, in my opinion, and it really highlights the green wave, which we're excited about. We are close to taking delivery, there are some functional things we have to work through, like where to plug it in, because there are some generators that run to keep the refrigeration and things going. And as you can imagine, you know, 30-foot food truck does not plug into a standard outlet, so we're working on that. But what we are anticipating that we will be able to do, there are programs that allow the district to provide meals for our students even outside of school time. So Greta is looking to be able to use that for things in school, like our field days, to have the food truck out there, but also other events, potentially to be able to go to some after-school programming and offer meals. So you'll hear more about that as we get deeper into the program. There's training that has to be provided, but I wanted to share that we're getting a food truck, because you might see it and say, huh, what exactly is that thing? So it is, it's very exciting, it's very exciting. And our food service staff has been, you know, great, they're going to learn how to run everything and how to work the food truck, but it is a very exciting opportunity. We also are pleased to say that tomorrow night, we will have, tomorrow afternoon, we'll have training for district-wide instructional leadership teams. We are working with the statewide system of support people, so that's an arm related to the Department of Education, and we get that support because of our two schools that have been identified as being in status for accountability, which is Federal Street and the middle school. But now the department has shifted its focus around the grant, the targeted assistance grant, and they are focusing more on district-wide systems and initiatives, recognizing that typically schools don't function in isolation in a district, it's a global approach. So we were very pleased to be able to use our tag grant for ILTs at all of our schools. And so tomorrow is the training, and then the SSOS people will be working with our principals and Karen and I to support the ILTs and have them meeting throughout the year. And, you know, we're really excited to have these school-based leaders giving their input and guidance to the building administrators around our academic professional development resource next steps. So it's a great opportunity for us, I'm very pleased we're able to get it moving along. So that's tomorrow. We have some new, a new course that's being offered, you heard the student reps talk about course selections coming up. The process is that staff who want to offer a new course need to complete some documentation that supports the standards, that it addresses prerequisites, any financial impact that it would have. It goes to the building principal, it goes to Karen for her approval, and then it comes to me for my approval, and then, per your policy, if I inform you of such, and then when you adopt the handbooks, which references program and study, you by that virtue approve the course as well. So I am informing you that we will be offering a sustainability course. Kyle Bastrum, our new, one of our new teachers who does the manufacturing course, has proposed it. At this time, it is being offered to determine interest. So I think I've shared with the committee previously that when we look at course selections, we have to make decisions about whether or not there's enough students who've signed up for it so that we can run it efficiently. So right now, it would be in the choices for students to choose or not. So I'll let you know if that actually does run, but that is exciting to have another option. Staffing, we are starting our interviews for our Director of Early Childhood. Karen and I are doing preliminary interviews that have just just started, we have a number of others to schedule. After that, we will identify candidates to be brought back for a second interview with a larger committee, and then we're excited, we're excited about the applicants, we had about 10 or 11 applicants, and, you know, we're excited about having conversations with the ones that we have not yet, and I'm feeling confident we'll have an outstanding director join us in the near future. And then we have gotten Director of Technology applicants, and the committee that worked with us previously to review and interview those candidates has offered again to do the same, so I will be setting up online evaluations of the application materials, and then those rated the highest will be brought in for interviews. Again, happy to see the candidates that we've gotten. We also have nursing students from GCC joining us for part of their pediatric rotation. They're at the middle school, high school, Federal Street, and Newton, and they'll be with us generally Thursdays from February 2nd through May 5th, so we are happy to have them. The wellness committee, Policy ADF of your policies, outlines the wellness policy, including the establishment and running of a wellness committee. There's language in that policy that the nurse leader will be the one that chairs that committee, and lucky for us, we have one, so we can have the committee chaired. And so Melissa Bednarski is chairing it, and then Greta, the food service director, has volunteered to be the recording secretary, which is a perfect combination of folks to facilitate that. Tomorrow, I will be inviting interested community members to put their names in, we need a few community members, and then there will be some staff as well, so we'll be looking for those names, and I believe we have a committee member that has been identified to serve. So Kate is going to be serving on that along with the other folks once they get identified. So we expect the meetings will be about once a month every six weeks, so trying not to overschedule people. Strategic planning, the surveys have been sent out multiple times. We have about a 20% return rate, which is actually quite good, so we're pleased with that. As you may remember, all of our surveys have been translated into Spanish, Romanian, and Russian, those are on the website, and our translators are contacting the families who've identified that those are their primary languages to inquire if they've done the surveys, see if they need any help with them, or just to encourage them to complete the surveys. One of the things, unfortunately, is in the analysis, we're not able to parse out whether or not the surveys that have been completed are any in the translated versions, but we're still asking people to reach out. And then Newton School and Federal are two where we have a lower-than-desired return rate, so those principals are reaching out to their families specific around that, and Derek is reaching out to work with his student reps on the strategic planning committee to try and get additional student input. Our student input was very low, so we're going to try to do that. We're leaving the survey open for the community at least until the February vacation, but again, a 20% return rate with survey research is actually good, so we have a decent return rate. The budget, back to Andy's excitement for the evening, we're moving along on the FY24 budget, we are almost completed with the superintendent's budget, so you will get that. Obviously, the March 2nd budget hearing is going to be posted, the ad has been sent for that to run for the required amount of time, and shortly, the budget summary that has typically accompanied that will be sent also to be published in the recorder. So the hearing is scheduled to be on March 2nd, 6 o'clock, in the Greenfield High School cafeteria. John Zahn was not available for that night. Okay, discipline update, it's a little bit of a different focus from discipline. I would say that this next piece of information was not a surprise to me, given the challenges that we dealt with last year around students acting out and the response to that. We are one of 42 districts across the Commonwealth identified to participate in the Rethinking Discipline Initiative, because we have some subgroups of students that have been identified as overly represented for exclusionary discipline, meaning internal and external suspension. It is a multi-year process where we work with, there's cohorts of professionals, so there's professional learning communities, there is professional development provided, and we work to create a plan to address that type of disciplinary response, and then we spend a year implementing, and we're, you know, working with the department representatives throughout. We've already started working on some of those initiatives, I've talked with you about them a number of times, including building the foundation, having our social-emotional learning curriculum, having our Director of Behavioral Services, our Equity and Community Connections Coordinator. We are adopting space in more of our buildings to act as reset rooms, so those are not meant to be a punitive response to student behavior, but an area where students can calm and get re-regulated with the support of staff. So we are already working on responding to student behavior in a very different way than utilizing exclusionary practices as a first response. There's another piece to this that actually works very well in- in, in line with our beliefs that we want students to be in school. And we want to provide proactive and positive responses to student behavior, is that there was a change in the law. There was a mental health bill that was passed. But within that mental health bill, there was included a requirement that schools use alternative measures prior to exclusionary discipline, which means we need to try other things first, which again, are things that we've already started implementing. That doesn't mean there are no consequences. I just want to make sure we're all clear. It doesn't mean that we accept inappropriate behavior. But we need to look at ways to respond to that behavior and keep students in school. We're trying with our attendance to get them there, and we need to try to keep them there. There are exceptions under the law. Students, situations with drugs, weapons, criminal, you know, interaction with criminal justice system. There are some very clear exceptions where a removal may be appropriate without alternative measures. But thankfully, those are not the norm. So that is a process I can keep you updated on as we go. But it, again, it's a, it's a multi-year process. So we'll be talking about that for a while. And again, I included some of the options that we've started adopting so that you folks can look at that, including quite frankly, some of the events that we're seeing connected to our facilities at the high school. So the last thing I want to share with you is I included some additional student performance data in your packets. I don't know if anybody has it. It's the pretty colorful, it's the packet with the, with the colors. There's a couple of data sets I'll talk to you about.
Does, does any of the committee not have this? Looks like this, because we have extra packets.
Should be in the packet.
Should be in there.
Okay. So there's a couple of pieces. The first thing I'd like to share is this is completely consistent with the data presentation I gave to you previously, because for the most part, this is data that reflects last year's performance. So this should be of no surprise to anyone. But as I say that, I would like to share that as we get to the end of this discussion, there are some positives. So the first several reports are based on our MAP data. That's standardized assessment given three times a year. Yes, so I thought three times a year. You only have the fall administration right now because the winter test window is still open, so we can't pull summary data yet. But we will have that. So the first packet of information, the first page, is from last year's fall administration. And, wait, wait, let me check. Yes. Yes, it is, last year's administration. And the second graph is really how the MAP data performance aligns with anticipated performance on MCAS. And you will see that the bulk of our students are expected to partially meet expectations. We do have, we do have about 33% of students that were anticipated to meet or exceed expectations and certainly a section of our population that was not expected. The, so you, the other graphs are anticipated alignment with SAT and ACT, another college acceptance test college. It's like SAT. Sorry, thank you, preparedness, I lost my word. I'm a little challenged on how we would anticipate SAT performance for a fifth grader, but that's why I'm not really highlighting those.
I'm sorry, I think our page is maybe out of order. Were you looking at these one of four?
No, they're not numbered in that way. Glenn, the numbering is based on how they print from, from the map. That's not our numbers. That's how they just print. That's not how they're in order. If you look at the top, it says Language Arts Reading on the top. And then you'll see it says Fall of 2021, 2022 on the top right corner.
So these are scores for the reading in particular?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So if you look at that second graph toward the bottom of that top page, that shows how these MAP scores would align, or they expect they would align with our MCAS performance. And
Can I, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
When it says on track 22 and on track 24, this is the very top page and the first graph.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Does that mean that this is what, how many students would be projected to be on track by the year-end map in the 2022 to 2023 school year? And likewise for the 24, or what does that mean?
I have to be honest, we did not do a lot of in-depth look at ACT and SAT alignment with this. But that's, this, this is alignment with ACT at the top. We did not look at that.
I was trying to figure out what that means.
Yeah, we
So these graphs, this first one, this is our MAP student data.
Yes.
That's, MAP is a standardized test they take, I think you said, three times a year.
Correct.
Feels like my kids are always taking the MAP.
Yes.
And this graph allegedly shows how they would project, based on their scores on MAP, how they would perform on the ACT.
Yes.
Which most of our students don't ever take.
Which is why I'm not talking about that top graph.
I just wanted to make sure that's what we were all
That is exactly what that supposes to show. The second graph, this one, this is where we're looking. Yep, this is where we're looking.
I'm so sorry.
This second one.
Very sorry, yeah.
Is, is supposed to show how students would perform on MCAS based on their MAP scores. Last.
This is Fall of 2021, so it would have been the Spring of '22. And then you'll see this year's is also
Yep, put your mic on.
So we need to sort of disregard the top one?
Correct.
Okay.
Please do. And the third one, also disregard the third one, because this is aligning with SAT.
So you want us to only look at the
MCAS, that's right.
And then I'm guessing, then it gets a good comparing the two years.
Yes.
We should put mics on so the people at home can ask questions.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I hated to ask you to start again.
Yes, there are plenty of extras of people out there.
The next, the next report is the following, is the same year for math. Okay? What I'm trying to show is this is pretty consistent with how our students performed on MCAS based on the presentation I shared with you earlier this school year. We have students who need to make a lot of growth.
We have, we have another one up here. Please just come and get it, we have another one.
So looking
And we're only looking at the MCAS.
Yes, only at MCAS.
Comparing last year and this year, no.
Last, last fall and this fall.
And this fall.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Herman?
Sorry. This is maybe a little complex.
That's fine, okay. So this is the challenge that we have, that some of the data sets that we're working with can be a little convoluted.
Got it.
So math performance based on MAP testing last fall, Fall of '21, is what you're seeing in the first two graphs for English and math. Okay? Then the next two graphs, same thing. You'll see up on the top right, the date is Fall '22, meaning students took this at the beginning of this school year. Only looking at the MCAS comparison. All of these will be online in the school committee materials. So if you look at those, you will see a very similar graph. You will see a very similar graph for math.
Okay, dumb question under
Not at all.
So we're looking actually at, on the cover, we're looking at Fall of 2021.
Correct.
Because it's the 2021, 2022 year.
Yes.
And that's for reading, and then it's Fall of 2021 for math.
Yes.
And then it's
Fall of 2022. Yeah?
Math.
Reading first, and then math.
Wait.
Same.
But the reading 22 is after the math ones.
So are you basically saying that we don't have enough green and blue?
Yes, Elizabeth, absolutely. That's what I'm saying. What I'm sharing, trying to share with the data sets that we have available, is that our pattern from '21 is very similar to the pattern we saw this fall. And you nailed it, that we do not have the number of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations as we want to have. That's what the pictures are supposed to be illustrating.
So that's our color palette for the year is green and blue.
That's where we're going, is green and blue. Okay. Yes, go right ahead.
Unlikely that even if we were doing everything right, that there would be huge changes from just one year to the next. Doesn't it take longer to change those?
Yes, it definitely does, which is what I will show in, as soon as we sort of finish with those pie charts, which are ugly. Ugly in that some of these data sets are not the most easy to manipulate. They're a little challenging. When we look at this information at the school levels, which I'm not showing, because then we have very, that at some points, we're close to identifying the actual performance of students specific to classrooms. So the other piece is, you know, that's a principal's conversation with individual staff to look at the performance of students within their classroom and help to identify instructional supports that can be put into place. From the school committee and the curriculum perspective and the resource perspective, we look globally. Is our Tier One effective? If you'll remember, we talked about that triangle, the mass-tiered system of support, where the base we're trying to establish is Tier One. We want strong instructional programs for all students to try to get about 80% of our students where they need to be with the regular instruction and curriculum. What this is showing is that our students were not there last fall or this fall. But you are correct, Glenn, it's going to take time. By the time our students took this test in the fall, they had been utilizing CKLA for English Language Arts for maybe a month or six weeks. So it does take time. But when our teachers and our administrators are looking at the MAP data, what they are able to do is look at standards, instructional standards that are particularly challenging for classrooms for grade levels, to see if we need to focus in on things like vocabulary. Or do we need to focus in on ways that our students find evidence in fiction? Or look at characters? So we're able to identify much more specific skills that need to be addressed. The other thing is that teachers are able to look at student change over time. So obviously, I think you will all understand that we're not going to share that level of data with, with the committee. So I want to share, this is the global, it does show we need work. We are able to drill down to make changes into the classroom and with the curriculum. So that's what we've been trying to do, and we are continuing to do. The graphs that you'll see after do point to some of the more positive, more student-specific rather than curriculum-level change. When you look at these, these graphs with the triangles and the blue bars, what that is showing, the first, the first one is math for Fall of '21, last September. And what you will see is the orange triangles that represent the target of where we want our students to be in terms of growth. The blue bars are not hitting that, meaning our students were not growing the way they want, we wanted them to grow in that content area. But if you look at the next page, you will see that even though our students have not gotten to where we want them to be, they are growing. We are seeing positive change in student performance using the MAP. The bars are going above the little triangles. So our growth is moving. Yes, Glenn?
But isn't that because we changed where the diamonds are?
We didn't change where the diamonds are.
Where did the diamonds come from? I thought those were our goals for
No, those are test norms.
Test norms, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, those are targets identified through MAP. That's not anything that we pick.
And then do we have different grades because different grades get tested in different years?
MAP, we don't do MAP testing for K in one.
Well, I see on Fall of '22, 2023 for math, I see grade two through eight represented. But on the chart for '21 to '22, I see grades three, six, seven, and eight represented.
Correct. When we returned from COVID
Put your mic on.
When we returned from COVID, we did not test our second graders. And our collected data in fourth and fifth grade was not documented either. So that just is a, you know, kind of the ebb and flow of who we were testing and why when we returned from COVID. We do test grades two through eight normally, though, in fall, winter and spring.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, so why is there an orange triangle at 14 under third grade for Fall 2020 to '21? But then the triangle is at just under 12 for third. I think that's what Glenn was asking, like, why are the triangles different on Fall 2020 to Fall '21 versus the triangle placement on Fall '21 to '22?
I do see what you're asking. I don't know. Do you know off the top of your head?
I'm reading the explanatory notes.
Yeah.
Grade, and it just says, the key is just grade level and norms.
Yeah.
So in theory, if they're using, if they're using median year over year, that number might be different from year to year.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Thank you, thank you.
So again, I apologize, these are a little convoluted. I understand that. But when we're pulling the reports from the test programs, we're trying to pull the ones that potentially could be the most useful for the committee to understand sort of where we are. And, you know, I guess the takeaway is I would hope that you would have from this is that while we see, we still have a lot of academic gain to make, which we've been talking about, and you have been supporting with the curriculum resources and, you know, all of, all of the things that have been happening. You have been supportive of. While we still have a lot of needs, our students are growing. You know, they may not have hit the target yet, but they're starting to move. And that's a positive, you know? And then when we look at things like our DIBELS data, we're, we're not able to present the DIBELS data because DIBELS, the, the reading, early reading assessment that we do, they actually say the composite is not to be used to compare performance over time. So So we're not sharing that, but what we can share is that when you look at individual student performance from one administration to the next, we are seeing growth. So individual students are improving their literacy skills and we have our reading interventionists working in small groups or one-on-one with students and that is having an impact. So we are seeing, we are seeing student change and it's in a positive way. But Glenn, you made the point, it takes time to change the entire system. So, so those are my hoped takeaways, even though these reports are not the easiest to digest, but.
I guess I would ask that in theory, should we have a modicum of stability in our leadership of the district over a period of years? We would ideally see this information year over year.
Oh, yeah.
Be able to become more familiar with what it's showing us year over year.
Yes.
And the different variables or different markers and how those play out as we show improvement. Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And we will continue to poke around in the programs and see if there's, there are other differently digestible reports.
Differently digestible, wouldn't that be nice?
To share.
And can I ask, like, just because I'm me? So all of these, like this, whatever NWEA is, which is all over this report as a, as a, you know.
That's the publisher of the MAP test.
The, thank you, the publisher of the MAP test. MAP is something that we use as a district for assessment.
Yes.
Does the state require us to use that or do we have like a menu of different ones we could use?
We are not required. We utilize MAP as an interim assessment, meaning we're checking in periodically as we go through the year. So it's sort of like, our unit assessments, we do much more frequently and our interventionists use some assessments very frequently to watch, you know, very small growth. We use MAP multiple times a year to kind of check in periodically. And then MCAS is sort of the final, final exam kind of a thing.
And we use these tests, MAP, because we're told we have to.
I'm not aware that we have to.
That's why I'm asking, just like, do we have to do this? I mean, I think we want to. That's not what I'm asking.
That interim assessment can be very beneficial if you look at them from several lenses. If you look high level, we want to see about 80% of our students hitting the mark because that helps us sort of look at, are we on track with our curriculum? And that's not just the books we use. It's the, the units, the standards that we're addressing, the assessments that we use in, in teaching, all of that is the curriculum. So are we doing a pretty good job with that? Then we can look at MAP data from two different ways. We can look at it by building, by classroom to see if there are instructional practices in one place that might help address patterns of, of positives or challenges in other places. So we look at it that way. And we also can look at it by the standards. So do we see particular challenges in reading or math that we can work on? Geometry is always a stinker.
Because we're not in general meeting state standards.
Even if we were.
Improve that.
Yep, but even if we were, in all likelihood, there would still be some, some, you know, mountains and valleys. And so you look at the valleys and say, what is that? You know, geometry is always a stinker for kids in math. And so we could, as an example, we could look and see, all right, where are we in, in geometry? Is that still an issue? If it is, how do we build in additional teaching opportunities to try to hit that? So you can look at it both of those ways. And then teachers can look at it for their children in their classrooms to see if they should make any change for the students in their room. So when you use a test like this, an interim assessment, and there are multiple of them, but sort of. Yeah, it's the one we use. When you use it in those ways, it can be very impactful for instruction. If you just give it to give it. There is, there is no value.
So in a way, this is your tool, like a builder uses a level to make sure everything's built level. We're going to use this to make sure you're not just saying, yeah, they're learning.
Exactly. That's one of the ways.
Yes, thank you. How about other questions from the committee?
No, thank you.
I saw Jean's hand and then I saw member Denise and then Johnson Rusad.
I think it's encouraging to look at the second grade on this because this is after you have changed the curriculum and they have exceeded expectations. And the third grade is sad because that would be the COVID worst hit. Is that a correct reading?
It could be. I think that what we will see for a period of time is that we have to fill gaps. And it is typically in the earlier grades that you see higher growth. You know, that the students accelerate their learning and fill those gaps. It, it does tend to slow at the upper grades, so I would certainly want to see those blue bars go way up over the green, orange triangles quite a bit. But our younger students are having the first positive impact of using the high-quality instructional materials. So, you know, it's going to be, I think, a number of years to watch and see how the gaps close. And I'm not sure if we'll ever be able to say, this was the impact of CKLA or this was because of the pandemic. But, you know, I thought, I certainly know that we are giving our students a great advantage by having high-quality instructional materials and doing the work we're doing, so.
Sorry to take you back to the very beginning of your report, but.
Oh.
Just a question, the new course offering, the sustainability course, is that an ecological sustainability course?
Yes.
What are we sustain, I'm just checking because there's so many things to sustain.
I don't have the curriculum, the description in front of me, but I'm quite happy to forward it.
That's okay. I was just curious if this was an ecologically minded sustainability.
It's an environmental focus for the course.
Okay, and then my last question, which is, I have sadness in my heart that I have to ask you this question. I'm really concerned that this bathroom situation has reached us so consistently. I know that it's a building issue, but this was the number one question at the Y E L O day. And so I, and I mean, it shouldn't even be what we're talking about, but, I mean, I've heard from students that they don't even urinate all day, which is really upsetting. So I'm curious, are we, what's your plan? Are we in violation of the health codes or are we getting into?
Not aware of that.
Territory? This is a problem.
So here's the challenge and it's something that's not new and it is something that Derek and the associate principals work on every day, is that we have students unfortunately damaging the bathrooms. And some of the damage makes the bathroom unusable. So they are working with students. Derek is meeting with students. They have tried a variety of strategies to not do this, but at some points, there is damage done to the facilities that makes it not safe to have students in the bathroom. So, you know, we're, we are trying to address it, but unfortunately, we have students who, for some unknown reason, continue to feel that that is an option during the day. And it is becoming exceptionally frustrating. So I understand that the students would be frustrated. I get that. But the administrators are, and the teachers are exceptionally frustrated as well because what is happening to some of those facilities is not, I, I cannot begin to explain why somebody would make the choices they're making. So we are continuing to work on it and we will. But I think it would be helpful if students have ideas about how to help shift the behavior of some of their fellow students, that they could certainly talk with the administrators, their guidance counselors, the nurse about any of that.
Okay, good. Well, you heard it here, students, so. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Number Johnson Rusad, go ahead, and then Vice Chair Martini.
I, I was wondering if the MAP is also used to determine what the professional development priorities are for the educators?
I will, right now, no. I would expect that we will get there. Right now, they're focusing on learning how to use the new materials and the new programs. That's a primary. They're, they're so different from the structures that have been used previously to teach in the district that we really feel it's important to give intermittent time with the trainers from the programs so that they really feel comfortable and are able to utilize them most efficiently. But as we go, yes, I would expect that we'll start narrowing in and identifying the areas where staff globally or in small groups, depending, are looking for some additional training. Yes, I think that's.
Yep, and then I don't, I'm not making assumption that this is even possible, but does it ever happen that individual level student data is used as a tool in helping that particular student?
Yes, yes, that is ultimately a goal. Absolutely, the ultimate goal. You know, we're a few steps back in a lot of cases from that, from it being a core, a tier one practice. Because again, working with, you see this data. And we have a lot of data that are available to our teachers. So one of the things that we are working on is how do we look at data? What is the data cycle? Learning what all this granular information means and what to do with it, which is the most important thing. But yes, that is a piece that we would very much like to see is that we're able to have individual meetings between a teacher and a student to set individual learning goals. I should go backwards. That does happen frequently at the secondary level, where teachers do sit with students, talk about how they're doing with their grades in particular courses, areas where they need assistance. So I don't want to suggest it doesn't happen at all, but I think you're looking at the MAP data specifically. So if that's true, then yes, that would be a goal.
Okay, and then going back to your earlier report on the discipline update.
Yes.
I, I really appreciated that you put right out there in your written report that the designation was in response to discipline data submitted during the 2021, 2022 school year and showed that we removed students of color and students with disabilities at a higher rate than other students.
Yes.
And I just think that people who are watching at home and didn't have access to this document may have, have missed that. So I think that's important that we put that out there very clearly. And I think that my understanding is that the social emotional learning work that we're doing has equity at the center. There's a push for equity for professional development, so that's kind of happening in, in a broad way. I'm wondering if there are a separate intervention specifically to address that issue around students of color and people with disabilities?
So I can start with the conversation about some of our students with disabilities. Again, based on conversations, since I've started here, I don't think the committee will be completely surprised to hear that some of that is related to certain populations, students that struggle with behavioral challenges that we've identified. And I've talked previously about the need to continue to work on refining our special education programming, which we have been doing. So I think that's one piece. Our, our staff is working very hard to establish very positive environments for our students who we know deal with social, emotional, and mental health challenges. So we've seen some positive change in those, in those environments. Again, it might not be at the macro, but we see it in the classroom level. Those are places that we are trying very consciously to do a better job of reaching out to families, to engage with families about what their needs are and not making assumptions about the genesis of the behavior. We are working with GCC to try to enhance and broaden some alternative pathways for students who may be less engaged in a typical, you know, I'll say nine, 12, or eight through 12, six-hour day, you know, that they need something different for their post-high school goals. So we're, we're trying to hit student need at a variety of levels. Our Equity and Community Connections Coordinator Glenn delivers advisory lessons to our eighth grade that, you know, he's been doing for a number of years. That has been a focus that he has been asked to continue. He is also been asked to focus on participating in attendance meetings because we feel like that's a place where many of our students aren't feeling engaged and we get into sort of this unproductive cycle where they're not engaged. So maybe they don't come to school and then when they come to school, they're behind. And so then it's easier to make choices that aren't productive in school. And so we have this vicious cycle that we would very much like to break. So he's working a lot at the high school around, and, and even some elementary for attendance meetings to try and get people to connect back a little bit with the school environment. And we have drafted a home visit protocol. So Glenn and Don, our Director of Behavioral Services, are able to do home visits with families who aren't able to get to us or who we haven't been able to contact. So we're, we're trying to sort of blanket the resources that we're using.
Great, I just, I don't know if it might be possible at a future meeting, but I'd love to have a report from Glenn on the Equity and Community Connections work and, you know, that's a new role for us and just to hear how it's going and what we can do as a committee to be supportive.
Yeah, I can ask him.
Thank you.
I wanted to just kind of circle back to what Member Wall was talking about, about this MAP data. And any reflection it might have on our new ELA curriculum? I just want to, I, I feel like we can't possibly have seen that yet, though, because the fall 22, MAP would have taken place in September, right? Which is, it was just when it was just starting.
Yeah.
And it seems like the probably biggest impactful thing was being in school in person. The previous, because fall of 2021, that was our kids coming, just coming off of remote school for most of the previous school year, except for the last, like.
Six weeks.
Seven or eight weeks.
April, fall of 21.
Yeah. So, so it seems to me like that's what we're looking at. So it seems to me like that's what we're looking at.
It could be that we just tested more students. It could be that they were more acclimated to school to test, engage in the testing process more efficiently. I think there's a lot of those pieces that just coming back to school in 2021 was not an optimal test situation, to say the least.
Right. And I also had a question about, when it says achievement percentile, is that the median percentile of students in that grade?
Can you tell me which page you're looking at?
I'm sorry, I'm on.
Can you read at the top what it says?
Last page, the last page in the packet.
Oh, great.
One of the blue graphs. The black and white above the blue graphs. So it says mean RIT score, and then standard deviation, and then achievement percentile. And that is by grade. So when it says grade two, for example, achievement percentile 23 for Fall of 2021, is that the median percentile? So for the second grade, is the 23rd percentile?
It's not my turn, I forget. I do believe that is the case, but I can double-check tomorrow and go online.
Okay. So that would be comparing our students here in Greenfield to all the students who take MAP. Yeah. So all the students who take MAP were experiencing kind of similar shifts in terms of in-person instruction or not, or coming off of the pandemic year, et cetera, at that time. And a lot of them going back to in-person for the following school year. And so I'm just wondering what you think is going on with like a huge jump in achievement percentile? Like for our second graders, year over year?
Honestly, at this point, I don't think it's even productive to hazard, I guess, what we're seeing, because the Fall of '21 is sort of a null year in terms of assessment data. We didn't even have all of our students testing. So it's the baseline we have right now. But I guess from an instructional perspective, I'm not sure that it's really worth a huge deep dive. I think that what, you know, standardized test data is good for what it's good for. And that can, that really depends on how you use it. We are administratively talking about, you know, what are the expectations we have? What are we using these data sets for? This is an area of focus for us because we need to use it for all the things that I outlined, or we're not going to use it. It doesn't need to be, this isn't a productive exercise for students or teachers if we don't use the data for learning. So that is a very rich conversation we're having right now. And it can be productive. But in terms of why from '21 to '22 our second graders would have improved, I think your point is very accurate. They didn't get the huge benefit of our new resources. It could be that those grade levels had a higher percentage of students that came into school and had good attendance and did increase their literacy skills in that year. I just, I don't, we don't know. So, sorry. I don't know that that's very helpful, but it is honest. I will give you that.
I appreciate the attempt, anyway. So it's good to see the growth that you were talking about in several of these grades. I do note that grades seven and eight seem to not be seeing the same.
We definitely do not expect the same level of growth as the students get older. However, I think it's fairly fair to say that last year, we had some significant levels of challenge in those grades. And so I'm not sure.
Well, those are the only ones I see with a drop.
Yeah.
So.
Middle school gets a bad rap.
Middle school, middle school nationally.
It's middle school.
Yeah. As academic.
That was terrible in middle school.
Challenges. Yeah. You know, I've never heard a superintendent or a principal say, "Oh yeah, my kids rock academics in middle school." It's a very challenging grade band consistently. Not that that's, we're not giving up, we're not saying that's okay, but it is not an unexpected pattern.
And I did have one question about going, we seem to be jumping back and forth.
I'm okay.
Between this data and the discipline.
Go ahead. As long as you tell me what general section you're talking about, I'm okay.
About the discipline update. I might as well continue the ping-pong between that. I noted the same thing that Member Johnson Musad said. And I wanted to know if we are using or encouraging any particular method or approach to responding to challenging behaviors? And what I mean by that is, like I said before, special education students are general education students.
They are.
Most of them, most of the time. And so they might have a special ed teacher who has a lot of expertise and is really well-trained, but they're also in multiple other teachers' classrooms who are not special education teachers. And you can understand something in your head, but then when faced with something in your face, it's very hard to know what to do, I think. So I was wondering if the district is using or is considering using some type of training for teachers to respond in a more codified way so that it's more planful and consistent? Like, I mean, there's multiple, but like collaborative and proactive solutions is one that a lot of schools use.
Well, we're not using commercially-available program. What we are doing is working on some basic premises around trauma, best practices for trauma-informed care, best practices at the foundational level for restorative practices. We are working in a collaborative, positive way to set positive classroom expectations. In our buildings, the classrooms talk about what does that mean? We're implementing a social-emotional learning curriculum based on the CASL competencies, which are very well-known and the foundation of many of the SEL approaches. We have responsive classroom elements embedded. We have second-step elements embedded. And we are working to grow our pro-social teaching for students instead of negative consequence for students. And so all of our, well, middle school, for example, Federal Street have some pretty well-established behavioral, I don't even want to say behavioral expectations, they're climate programs. So all of our students are responded to in an individual way. If we have students who have greater need in terms of working on particular behaviors, then we have our social workers, our Director of Behavioral Services, our B CBA, our special education teachers, work on individualizing approaches and then talk with the teachers about ways to support students who aren't able to access the general expectations.
I think that kind of still goes to the idea that I was talking about. For example, we might offer training in trauma-informed practices. And you might come to understand trauma pretty well, but then still, when faced with a challenging, trauma-related behavior, not know what to do on the ground. And it can be helpful to have some kind of a mental framework for steps you will take ahead of time.
I think that we are making, somewhat, but I also think that we are making some really good strides and that the principals are working with the resources in the district and creating some positive, positive and teaching ways to respond and working with their staff. And I think that we are moving in a good path. So that is something the administration is working on and will continue to work on.
Okay. It mentions here in your report that we are utilizing alternative measures, including after-school detention. Is that aimed at trying to have a student out of a learning environment less?
Yeah, that's what the alternative measures are.
So making it after school as opposed to leaving class during the day?
Well, it depends what the situation is, and it depends what the behavior is that we're responding to. And so it's a very individualized issue. But after-school, hanging out after school for an hour when we have the late bus so that students are able to get home without their parents having to worry about their transportation, can be utilized as an alternative to suspension. But there are times students' behavior will warrant them leaving a classroom.
And what are we doing in detention?
That's an individual decision for students, depending on what we're dealing with.
I meant more big picture as a district. Like, are we utilizing that time to engage in some form of restorative?
That depends on what the issue was and the individual situation.
Okay.
Any other questions for the superintendent from the committee? Okay, we shall move on. Thank you all. Thank you both for your reports and your work. And the next item is the chair's report. And I really just have the one item, which is the subcommittee assignments for 2023. And to be honest, you should have it in your packet. And also, all members have access to this in the shared drive. You can see it at any time. I really did not make any changes from last year, in part because basically all our committees are still doing work that is ongoing, and it makes sense to keep that continuity. The one exception, as the superintendent stole my thunder on this, is the, that's okay. I got rid of Health and Safety Committee because they weren't doing anything. And the other thing that I've done is, over the past year, talked to both the superintendent and to legal counsel about what are our requirements around having committees? And we actually have no requirements to have any committees. We have a small school committee, as it is, with only seven members. And so I think because the Wellness Committee was starting up and the Health and Safety and Facilities Committee did not really have much work under its charge, it made sense to get rid of that. And Kate is going to be our representative to the Wellness Committee with Melissa Benarsky, the nurse leader, and whoever else is designated to work on that. And then, I guess, for this, I think we do have to vote on it because some of the representative items, well, we've always voted on it in practice. And then some of the representatives, for example, Planning and Construction do require that we vote on who is appointed there. So I would take a motion to approve the subcommittee assignments for 2023 as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion? All right, hearing no discussion, is there anyone who is abstaining from voting? Any no votes? So that passes unanimously. Thank you. And then we'll do subcommittee reports. I do try to write them down so I don't forget. I know for certain that from the collaborative, Member Denise has some items to share.
Yes, so the collaborative had their first kind of official meeting of the year where they weren't voting in officers or discussing budget. And it will be the final remote meeting. We will now all be meeting in person. And because.
Is that in Northampton?
Well, that's what I'm just getting to. So.
Sorry.
Everyone comes from everywhere, and Greenfield seems to be the choice hub. So they're not really sure where that's going to be, but hopefully we can support them with some ideas if they need it. But it will be taking place, the first in-person one will be in Northampton, so I'll be going down there, which I am unusually excited about. It's kind of nice, these people are pretty cool. So they have two events coming up. One is March 11th, it's Transforming Education for Social Justice. And that will be at the University of Massachusetts. And then they have a second one on March 20th at the Sheraton in Norwood. And it's the Fourth Annual DYS Racial Trauma Conference. And I'll be, I believe, at the March 11th one. But if any of you wish to go, I can send you the flyer, or maybe I can upload it to the Google Drive. And you can take advantage of this if that's something that you want to do for professional development. I think the ticket prices are really negligible, it's like $10 or something like that.
Thank you for that. I was just going to suggest, could you make a shared folder for the collaborative on the Google Drive and share it with all of us with a reminder, a reminder of no discussion outside of school committee would be.
Yes, ma'am, no problem.
Those sound great, thank you. And where did you say the social justice one on the 11th is?
That one is at the University of Massachusetts, Pleasant Street, Amherst.
Okay, thank you.
And that one is specifically about equity in K-12 schools.
Thank you. Any questions for Member Denise on the collaborative work? And I would also say, maybe talk to the superintendent about what they might need in terms of meeting space and if we would have something within the schools that would be appropriate that they could use.
That's a great idea. I will do so.
Yeah. That's what you get when you leave the room, we assign you stuff to do. Any other questions or comments for Member Denise? All right, so how about a policy subcommittee update?
I don't have one, except that we're working on, I'm working on establishing a calendar for the year for the policy subcommittee meetings.
Thank you. Redistricting.
Okay, we're ready with our report. And I wanted to start from the beginning. Member Johnson Musad and I formed this committee three years ago because at that time, we discovered that there were parents who felt one school, one elementary school was better than other elementary schools. And they were using school choice as the method to get their children into that school. There was another group of children who lived geographically near the school that was the top school, according to the parents. And those children were removed from the school and bused to a different school. Now, as someone who grew up in the South, in a segregated school, this felt very familiar to me, and I felt like we needed to stop this practice. And Member Johnson Musad agreed, and we started this committee to study what other choices there were. Then COVID happened, and so everything stopped. And then we got a new superintendent. Then COVID happened, and so everything stopped. And then we got a new superintendent. And again, we went to her to, to see how we could start working on this project. And in the meantime, parents were asking that the fifth grade be moved back to the fourth grade, to the elementary schools. So there were double problems that were being generated in the schools. So Superintendent DeBarge said that we needed to have a study done to see how, the best possible usage of all the buildings, including the Green River School. So the study was completed. In the meantime, member Denise joined the committee a year ago. And so the study was completed. We were given four options at the, as a result of the study. The first option was to have K1 in one of the elementary schools, 2, 3 in a second elementary school, and 3, 4, I mean, 2, 3, 4, 5 in the third elementary school, move the fifth grade back to the middle school, to the elementary schools, and move the eighth grade from the high school to the middle school. So the, the three of us and the superintendent went on a listening tour in the community. And we had anybody who wanted to come and tell us their thoughts come. We went, we had a meeting at the high school. We had one at Greenfield Gardens. We went to Oak Courts. We went to Lydon Woods. And we had a meeting at the Federal Street School. After that, the high school and middle school teachers were at a meeting and they told us their opinions of this idea. We also heard from the elementary school teachers. Superintendent DeBarge went to the administration and met with them and talked with them about it. And the administration said the fifth grade definitely needs to be moved back to the elementary schools and that the eighth grade definitely needs to come back to the middle school because these children do not have the emotional maturity to be where they are now. So the, the first option that we had would accommodate moving the, the fifth and eighth grades into the appropriate places. The second option would just be redraw the school lines so that there is as much equity as possible using neighborhoods. The third and fourth options needed lots of construction on schools to accommodate moving the fifth grade back into the elementary schools because the reason the fifth grade was moved was because Green River School was shut down and there wasn't room for the fifth grade any longer in each of the elementary schools. Member Denise took it upon herself to help us by exploring where money would come from for construction using options four and five. Went to the mayor and the mayor said that the city has reached its debt limit and cannot do any more borrowing for construction purposes. So that, because, because of the construction of the new library and the new fire station. So that is not an option. And even if the money should miraculously appear, the, the schools would, it would take a lot of time to construct room for the fifth grade to come back into the schools. So therefore, we are left with option one to go forward because that is the way we can achieve equity for all children and not remind me of growing up in the South, which I know you don't care, but that's a bad memory. So anyway, we need the school committee to vote, to support the superintendent exploring how we would make this happen. It will not happen for this school year. It will not happen for the next school year. So there is plenty of time to explore how to make this happen easily and smoothly, which I know it won't, happen easily and smoothly, but we're going to try. In the meantime, at our listening sessions, we discovered that transportation is the thing that parents see as the biggest problem. So the superintendent said she might be able to give us a report at the March school committee meeting on how that would work because the transportation director has been working on it. The other problem that we can see as a immediate issue is the Green River School, which needs to be either disposed of, used, or something. And so the superintendent is doing the necessary research to report back on what is going to hap, what, what the possibilities are for the Green River School. There are rumors that we have used state money and that we will have to repay the state if we don't use the Green River School. But all of this is, you know, up in the air and those are things that, that we will be researching. In the meantime, our committee will continue meeting and continue coming to the school committee with reports of problems that the community may point out to us that maybe we haven't heard yet because everybody didn't tell us what they thought. But in the meantime, we want to hear from everybody. We will do what the research that's necessary to figure out how to solve the problems because we recognize this is going to be a big change. And, and we want to have community involvement in helping us make this happen. So I'll turn it back over to the chair to, to maybe have a vote on it.
Thank you, Jean. Thank you, member Wall. And thank you to member Johnson Musad and member Denise for all of that work and as well as to the superintendent. I know it's been an interesting, ongoing process, certainly an in-depth, ongoing process. And I want to make sure that I summarize this for not only the committee, but for folks who are following this topic from the community. It looks like the committee has come to us tonight and said, we have a report. And we believe that option number one is the one we would like to attempt to move forward with for the district. And you're nodding your head and your committee members are nodding your heads. So what I would say regarding a vote is, in terms of making sure we are true to open meeting law, we should vote in March because we don't specifically have this listed as a topic for tonight's meeting. And we do want to make sure the public has the opportunity to, should they now be first paying attention for the first time, have the opportunity to digest and, and bring it to us. I also think we, as a committee, probably want an opportunity to digest it before we vote. And recognizing that two of our seven members are not here tonight, that also kind of, I think strengthens the argument to move it. But I certainly would not want to move forward with a vote knowing that it wasn't specifically listed as an item on the agenda for tonight. And if I missed that, I'm very sorry. But I kind of also feel okay with giving everyone a month to digest and come back and vote for certain.
And if any of the members have, have questions for us?
Yes, please. And, and I think Christine wanted to interject something as well.
I just would like to, if nothing else, if the committee that's here would be comfortable confirming for me the request to move forward, looking into transportation and also looking into the options of how we could address Green River. So at least if the committee is in agreement with me moving forward that way, I can gather that information pending.
So let's, can we talk about them separately? So the first one, let's tackle the Green River one. And what I would say about Green River is, anyone who's paid attention to what NASDAQ told us, the folks who did this facilities report told us, it should come as no surprise that we don't need Green River as a school unless we were to do something that is an alternative program or some, some additional special education program, something like that, which we don't have staffing or money for currently and not on the horizon have staff or money for. So maybe we should have it be two things, the, the Green River piece. And then the second request from the superintendent is, can I move forward with starting the transportation information gathering, reporting? Can we, so, let's do, let's do a motion on that because this is really just for both its information gathering. It's not really anything we, it, it's going to be really detrimental to the process or in violation of really people being able to speak their mind about what, what we're doing and the decisions we're making. So could I have a motion to request the superintendent review both transportation, information regarding option one, and also the status of Green River as a school in the Greenfield Public Schools?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Susan Farbert, do you have what you need? Okay. Any discussion on that? Please, member Johnson Musad.
First, I just would really like to appreciate member Wall's leadership on this committee and the superintendent's. Your commitment to community engagement through the whole process and having the meetings in all those locations that you mentioned is exactly what many of us have been advocating for and many in the community have wanted. And I also want to really thank everyone who attended and shared your thoughts with us throughout the process. Some people attended more than one. And that was really great. And I know that there were also staff at the, the different housing communities and in the schools who made extra efforts to welcome us there. So many, many appreciations. And then just to kind of speak to the motion, I, I don't know, I mean, I think we all know exactly, basically what we're asking the superintendent to do. I, I don't know if we need to wordsmith it that much, but to me, we kind of know what the status of Green River is. But I think we're, what, I mean, and I think, just so we're clear when we're voting, I don't even think we need to change the motion, but we're asking the superintendent to start gathering information about what it would mean to, how we might get rid of it or what we might do with it, given that we're not going to be using it.
And, and the implications of such, would you go that far?
Yeah, what would, yeah.
Because I think that's what's the intent behind the motion is, what if we say we don't need this as a school building anymore, then what? Hopefully that is broad enough. Are you okay?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anything else, member Johnson Musad?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, comments from the committee? All right, so we'll vote on the motion. Any no's? Any abstentions? Awesome. So that passes unanimously and we'll go ahead and start that information gathering. Thank you. And thank you to the committee again for this work. And I will remind folks who are following the meeting that all of the materials are available on the district website, including the options that we were just discussing. And that was a subcommittee report for redistricting. How about, do we have something from strategic planning? We don't have to. I'm just wondering.
We're just in the process of the survey being administered, so no other-
That was in your report. Yes, thank you. And then how about, I know member Exrem, Secretary Exrem is not here tonight to report out on budget. There was a budget meeting, subcommittee meeting last Friday. Is there anyone who would want to give a budget update? I don't want to put anyone on the spot.
I would defer to Kate if she would like, but I'm also happy to share.
Vice Chair Martini, no pressure. That's totally fine. We can do it.
Okay, so on behalf of the subcommittee of synthesis, the recording is, is or has been posted where all the other, all the other meeting recordings are. But there was conversation about the fact that, as I already said, the FY24 superintendent's budget is, is moving along. At this stage, we anticipate building four additional staff people into the budget, two first-grade teachers to account for a bubble in kindergarten that would require an additional section, we believe, in Newton School and Federal Street School for first grades, a district-wide 504 coordinator, section 504 plans, our plans for people. It's actually an American with Disabilities Act-related plan to accommodate for, for students who have disabilities. It is not a special education plan. It is for, is to allow accommodations in the school setting. But we have such numbers in the district that at this point, we've been relying on stipends for staff in each of the buildings. And with turnover in staff, there's a learning curve that's required because it is based in law. And so at this point, we feel it is more efficient and beneficial to our students and families if we have a dedicated staff person. The last position would be for an additional teacher for a middle school substantially separate program for students with some significant cognitive and learning disabilities. We base that on students aging up into the middle school from our elementary schools. So those are the four positions we anticipate needing to add. There was also a fair amount of discussion, I think is fair to say, around the potential ways that Medicaid reimbursement funding could be handled in subsequent years. So for this year, the mayor has identified that she would be doing a supplemental appropriation to the schools to assist in contract settlement, which is appreciated. So that would go into our general fund to be available. What the discussion is in subsequent years is that it could be addressed in two separate ways. I will say, so money, when we do service that is eligible to be reimbursed by Medicaid, it is done by school staff, typically special education-related service providers like occupational therapy, speech and language, or counselors. Those are some of the ways that the funds are generated. Medicaid reimburses for some of those services. And when the Medicaid payments are processed, that money goes to the city. That is typical. Once the Medicaid reimbursement is certified, meaning it's double-checked and official and all of that, it then is converted to free cash on the city side. So that's the typical way that the funds are addressed as a revenue. What we are discussing is going forward, it could be handled in two ways. It could be managed as part of the city's budget in which the budget reflects that there is an appropriation added to a special education reserve fund, which then could be used by the schools for unanticipated special education needs. Some of the concerns raised from members of the school committee and our business manager, Andy, were that to access those funds would require a vote of the school committee and of the city council. So that is a piece that was raised as a concern. The other option that could be done is that once the funds are in free cash on the city side, the mayor could do a supplemental appropriation to the school department's budget. So that is still up for discussion for subsequent years. I want to make clear that is not what has been indicated for this fiscal year. I also want to share that the funds we're talking about are from prior years. So there are- So they're always a year behind in terms of the funds that we're talking about. Generally, I see Diana here, so she can nod at me if I'm right. Generally, it is approximately $200,000, give or take. But that's around the amount that's up for discussion. So that, I think, was the bulk of the conversation.
Thank you.
Sure.
Questions about anything that is described from the budget subcommittee? Please.
I'd just like to add a piece that I raised at the budget subcommittee about just wondering if we could look at in the next budget, putting in some more funds for recording secretaries. Currently, the superintendent very generously has been offering to take minutes during our subcommittee meetings. And while it's very kind of her, I personally, the more I've thought about it since the meeting, really think that we should free up the superintendent's bandwidth to think about bigger issues and not, not have to have those minutes hanging over her important work and thinking and big picture strategy. So that was part of our discussion as well.
Thank you. Anything else? Did you say?
I just.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. You gotta just jump in.
I just feel that I should say, for those who were not a part of the meeting or haven't had a chance to watch it, I think the superintendent is being very gracious about the issue of the Medicaid reimbursement. It does not appear to have been a practice of the city to return that money to the schools in prior years. And considering that these services are provided by the schools and the schools make the effort of doing all of the paperwork required to get that reimbursement, it's, it may feel shocking to some folks to realize that the city has maybe been just keeping it. And as I said at the meeting, we don't, we don't provide services to students with disabilities as a means of generating revenue for the city. That's not why we do it. We do it because they need them and because we're obligated to serve them. So there's no good reason for those monies not to be provided back to the schools. And in regards to the issue of whether it goes into a reserve fund, which is more restrictive or is provided to the schools in a less restrictive manner, I, my point of view on this is that a reserve fund being for unanticipated special education expenses doesn't really make sense, considering we already have many anticipated expenses in special education that we have great difficulty funding. So I, my hope is that the city will make it its routine practice to return that Medicaid reimbursement to the schools in future years and, and will allow the schools to use that money in the ways that it needs and not, not restrict it unnecessarily or set it up so that there are unnecessary delays with extra votes from the school committee and the city council.
Thank you. Have we beaten the budget subcommittee to death? I think we have. We're going to move on. All right, so the meat of the agenda, now that everyone has left us. Thank, thank you all for. We've got something in the packet about the retainer for Dupree, which is our legal counsel for the school committee. And this is an updated retainer that basically is looking for additional compensation for the Dupree Law Offices. And I will give a little bit of context and then I will turn it over to Christine if I miss anything. We hired Dupree in December of 2020, maybe January of 2021, which was a very unstable time in the district. Most significantly related to this issue, our legal counsel at the time was Peter Smith, who passed away unexpectedly around Thanksgiving of 2020. And we were without legal counsel at the time. And we did know, Vice Chair Exrem and I, we did know how much we were spending for legal counsel prior to Dupree. And when Dupree sent us their proposed retainer for their services, we could not sign it quick enough because it was reducing our legal bills, I think by around 75%, and I'm not exaggerating. So we knew we were getting a great deal. What Russell Dupree did not know is how much work we would be. And even with, we, so in, in June of 2022, we signed an updated retainer where we increased the amount that we were, we were paying. And we're now asking for additional. Are you making me stop?
Just a little bit more.
Just a tiny bit, it is just a tiny bit more. I would say without doing the math and having the numbers in front of me, we're still with this new retainer amount of $4,000 a month. We're easily, I would say, still 50% less than what we were paying previously. So we're still getting an excellent deal for what I would say is amazing legal counsel who are available all day, all night, all the time for all of our questions and our research and our contract negotiations with our unions and things like that. Did I forget anything?
No. I, at times, there are three partners in the practice and there are days I have spoken to all three for various needs. So to say they are accessible and extremely thorough and invaluable would be an understatement.
Yeah. So I would, at this point, ask for a motion to approve the updated retainer for the Dupree Law Offices.
So move.
Member Wall, in a second.
Second.
Second from Member Johnson Musad, is there further discussion? Please.
Are we required to go out to bid for law services?
It's about amounts, it's not about the service.
Okay.
And so no, because it doesn't, it doesn't meet the threshold.
$4,000 a month, that's $48,000 a year, that doesn't.
I believe it's $60,000 a year for, for a bid, but we can certainly check on that, but.
I also, yeah, I was going to say, I don't think.
Is it a whatever 30 thing? Yeah, we're not, it's exempt. Thank you for reminding me of that, yeah.
Thank you.
Further questions? Hearing none, we will move to a vote. We do still have a quorum with Vice Chair Martini away from the table, just to clarify. Any no votes? Any abstentions? So that passes unanimously with Member Martini absent for, yes. Thank you. And the next item, the vote to raise tuition rates at the Academy of Early Learning. And I will actually have Christine speak to this one. Do you want to?
Yes. No, I haven't, I'm sorry. So in what you will see in your packet are three, three documents. One is a memo from me to the school committee making the request. The second piece is a memo that was written by the prior superintendent, to the prior superintendent from the prior business manager in January of 2020, requesting a tuition increase at that time. Based on some research that I have done, the proposed tuition increase for 2021 does appear to have been implemented and those appear to be our current rates.
It was.
Okay. So what I am asking the committee to consider is implementing the proposed rate for the 21-22 school year for our upcoming 23-24 school year. And the tuition increase proposed at that time for 22-23 to be implemented for the 24-25 school year. What you will see on the following page is a summary of preschool rates across the region, also comparing some private local centers in all, in all. The interest of full disclosure, I did not compile this. It was done by another superintendent in the region this year for this same type of discussion. I think you will see that our rates are still very competitive. One thing I will share, there are some districts that do offer free preschool for their city residents. There are at least four that I identified just this week that I know offer for full, fully free preschool. But as you can see in my memo to you, we do, we are running low on the revenue in the preschool tuition line based on what we had anticipated using. This is one more account where we're using current year revenue for current year expenses, which again is not best practice financially. The other piece I wanted to share is that based on our current enrollment, we have approximately 30% of our enrolled students that pay full price. We have close, just under half, certainly it's under half. I had the little sticky note with me and can't find it, of course. But under, just under half that are free students on individualized educational programs. So students with identified special needs who attend preschool to receive their services do not pay. So, you know, less than half of our students, but close to half, fall into that category. So it's not a huge financial windfall for us to have this increase. And the other piece I would like to share, just remind the committee that folks who do get a spot at our preschool are able to request that their income is reviewed for eligibility for reduced or free tuition based on income. So that, that is still in place regardless.
Thank you. So before we have discussion, I would just like a motion. How about I motion or I move to accept the recommendations from the superintendent to approve the 23-24 increase tuition at Academy of Early Learning? Anyone can do it.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you, and discussion. I have, I have a clarifying question that I don't think I understood until I was just sitting here and I read this and talked to you about this. So we, it looks like we've, I know we voted in 2020 to increase tuition. I believe based on how this memo is written, we likely would have voted to increase based on the three years of progression that was in here, but we did not actually implement the three years of progression. Is that, is that your understanding?
That is correct if in fact the full memo was accepted by the committee, which I'm not.
And I, we could certainly go back, but.
Yep, but.
The work was done, it's here, and you've done additional work to show.
And given the fact that it has been multiple years, I felt it was appropriate to ask for sort of a reconfirmation that the committee would be in agreement with doing this increase at this time.
Thank you, okay, thank you. Discussion, further discussion or questions? You look like you have a question, Member Denise, or a comment.
I don't know if I have a question or a comment. I, I come from a place where these things are free, like on the West Coast, this is free. So it's hard for me to look at this and to calculate it and to imagine as a parent paying $7,000 approximately a year for full day care. I know that that's a drop in the bucket for some care. I know that people pay tremendous amount more. But it's just, just kind of staggering to see that parents are still having to deal with these particular costs when it's handled in other places for free. Gil Montague apparently has it for free. So I guess I don't really have a question, I just, it just, it's frustrating to see this. I couldn't afford it.
Well, remember also the process exists for every family to ask for a review of their income and make adjustments based on income.
I understand that, but I think I'd have to see that in detail, what, what sort of sliding skill that involves. In the past, when I've been involved in applying for things like that, it doesn't always end up being as sliding as you might think.
Sure, sure, I appreciate your comments, thank you. Other comments or questions? Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
I also support universal free pre-K, both in the country and in the Commonwealth, and I think that would be great. In the meantime, I think we have to charge because we're, we don't have the tax base to offer this to everyone for free, and that's so sad.
Also appreciate your comments, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Member, Vice Chair Martini.
Yes, maybe that would be a good windmill for us to tilt at at the mask legislative day on the Hill in May. So this, this memo from 2020, of course, was projections. And I was just wondering, how did that actually play out in reality?
It was also projections pre-pandemic, pre-pandemics, yeah.
So the, the proposed, say, 2020 to 2021 additional, estimated additional revenue of 22,000, and then the following year estimated 10,000. How did that actually play out on the ground?
I don't know how it did, but quite honestly, given that we were in remote for part of 20, you know, we, we didn't have any students attending for almost all of that. But I don't know what their actual revenue was for that year off the top of my head.
And I can also give some context just for how it kind of unfolded when we went remote, is that we also were in a situation where logistically with collecting tuition payments, it's something that was done on a monthly basis, and most of the families that were participating at AEL were paying in-person monthly. And so when we went remote and when we had to change all of that, we definitely lost significant amounts of tuition, at least in that, that end of the 20 or 19-20 academic year, because we were not actually collecting for a number of months.
So when you say that you don't expect this to create much of a additional boon for the district, how much is not much, I guess, is what I'm wondering. Since these projections are, they're old and we don't, they're not really.
I would have to estimate, to be rough, very rough. I, I would estimate somewhere probably in that $10,000 to $12,000 annually, because the big increase, that 10% increase was in, has been in effect. Like families are paying now with that having been built in. What we're looking for now is the additional 4%. So that, it's probably similar because that's the percent, those are the rates we're building off of. So I, I think that's probably not an unfair estimate. But again, when we're, we did, did not have the reserve in the preschool tuition account, so we sort of started behind where we would have wanted to be having this year's expenses already in existence prior to this year. So assuming we collect everything that we budgeted for, we will be beginning next year again likely behind where we've budgeted anticipating, you know, meeting every revenue dollar that we get to run the program. And it's still not self-sufficient by any means.
So safe to say then, we would see 10% or less of the $130-ish thousand difference between. between this year's projected use and where we started out with the revolving account for AEL.
I'm gonna say yes, assuming I just followed what your question was.
Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Let's move to a vote. We are voting on the recommended, recommended tuition increases for Academy of Early Learning. Are there any abstentions? Any no votes?
No.
One no vote from Member Denise. Any, and so any other no votes? So that passes four to one. Thank you all, and we'll do the vote to restrict enrollment in the Commonwealth Virtual School. And I will say that since the last meeting, I studied the memo that we got from the state. And I also did a little bit of homework to look at what we'd done in the past. And this question did not come to us in 2020 as a school committee that I could find. It did come to us in 2021, and we chose to do nothing. And then in 2022, we did not vote or bring it up at all, which is the school committee's option. And here we are being asked again, and it is because we will be asked every year in which our district has more than 1% of our students that are attending either one of the two virtual schools in the state. And our current percentage is 1.29? 1.29, so 1.3. And after reading the memo three times, I would recommend that this body actually take no action and not make a vote on this. We're close to the 1%. We don't have to do anything. We can just let it continue to be and review on an annual basis. If we choose to vote and we choose to restrict, it doesn't impact anyone in that 1.29 that's already there. It would impact, impact me, people moving forward, and we would then put ourselves in a cycle where we really would need to vote, review and vote every single year. But if any member wanted to make a motion to restrict Commonwealth Virtual School enrollment, now would be the time. Member Johnson Musad.
I move that we restrict virtual school enrollment to the maximum amount possible.
Are you saying restrict it to 1%?
Is that the ma, if that's the amount legally?
Yes. Well, it could be two, yeah. What do you want?
Which one? I'm sorry, the choice is 1% or 2%?
1%, yeah, you could go up to 2%. Yeah.
1%, well, is, am I, if I'm voting for 1% restriction, that's lower or higher than the 2%?
I think what you meant was more restrictive.
More restrictive would be 1%.
What's the most restrictive option?
More restrictive would be 1%.
That's what I'm voting for.
So you're asking?
That's what my motion is for.
Okay. So you would be asking to restrict enrollment from Greenfield Public Schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Virtual Schools to 1% of the district enrollment, beginning in academic year 23-24, and based on our October SIMS report from the previous year, which would be in this case 2022?
Correct.
Would anyone like to second that motion? And further discussion?
Isn't it?
Member Wall.
If we don't vote, isn't it limited to 1%? It's not?
No. It's limited to two. Member Denise.
How many students compromise the 1.3?
19.
And from what I've read, the virtual school really helps the most medically fragile of our students, and there's a consistent waiting list. Like last year, there's a huge waiting list, so people are having trouble even getting in.
That could be true. I, I do know that the medical piece.
131 is the number on the Mass Live article about it. So it seems like there's a great need for this, and we're very lucky that there aren't more. But yeah, I definitely wouldn't want to restrict it. I think that it's an important thing to have access to that. Some kids really need that, and we should, you know, support them if they need to use it.
Further comments or questions? Go ahead.
The reason I made the motion is because I feel like as a school committee, we're often tearing our hair out at the mechanisms that Commonwealth has set up that allow students to essentially leave our school district. And we have great schools here. We have, we have plans underway for accommodations for all types of disabilities and learning styles. We're a great district, and let's keep as many of our students here as we can.
Other comments or questions?
I think one of the things that was brought up as one point of consideration last month was what we know or don't know about the relative student outcomes of virtual schools. And we don't have any data or what have you about that in front of us right now. I have not seen particularly positive outcomes from virtual schools in my experience. So I'm not sold on that as an option that is being set up in this way by the Commonwealth, which is somewhat in line with what Member Johnson Musad was saying. In terms of students with disabilities that do use virtual schools, I think one of the questions last month was whether there might be any unintended consequences of restricting I think what I was thinking of at the time is that we may have student or students with certain disabilities who then do not attend a virtual school and are attending Greenfield Public Schools, but whose needs we are not necessarily prepared to meet well. I, I'm certainly a big fan of Greenfield Public Schools, like Member Johnson Musad. However, I'm also very realistic about just how well we are or aren't meeting the needs of disabled students right now. So I feel cautious about placing restrictions on them and about what we would be prepared to do for them if we did.
Further questions or comments? Member Denise, I'm looking at you, but you can't see me because your microphone is still on. Do you have more questions? Okay. So it sounds like we're ready to move to a vote. If you vote yes, you're intending to put a restriction on the Commonwealth Virtual Schools enrollment from Greenfield Public Schools. If you vote no, or you abstain, you are not wanting that restriction. Are there any no votes? One, two, three, four. So that's four no votes. Any abstentions? And yes, vote, Member Johnson Musad?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all. That was a good discussion. Looks like it's our last business item, the vote to declare library books at the high school surplus. We do have a weeding list in the materials somewhere.
It was online, I believe.
Oh, it's online. It's in the folder. It wasn't printed because it is lengthy. I would entertain a motion to declare as surplus the library books from a Greenfield High School listed on the provided weeding list. I, I'm gonna miss talking about weeding lists. Do I have a motion?
I move, yes. I moved to, I moved that. I forgot how to say it.
I moved that. And a second.
Oh, yeah, you say, so moved. That's right.
Sorry. I messed up my part. It's not, it's not your fault. It's my fault. And we had a second from Member Denise. Any discussion on the list or the surplus vote? Hearing none. Are there any abstentions? Any no votes? That passes unanimously. And for item 11, request for new agenda items, I've already noted, we will do a redistricting vote on the options as we discussed previously at the March meeting. I would also remind folks that in between now and the March regular meeting, we will have our budget hearing on March 2nd. That's more of just a note and not an agenda item. Do we have other option, other new agenda items? Member Denise.
Oh, I just had a question.
Sure.
Will we be able to view the school committee yearly calendar at the March meeting? Because I know.
I just, I just shared, so.
I'm sorry, did you share it and I didn't hear it?
No, no. No, what I shared with Vice Chair Martini was, look, I was working on it.
Oh.
So I'm sure that if Secretary Ekstrom was here, she would share what challenge she is going through right now, but she's having some eye issues, and she's not able to work on some of the things because she cannot see, and she's scheduled for some surgery. And that has put us in a delay related to the calendar. But I do think, based on the work that I was able to do myself, that we would have a calendar to look at for, a draft to look at for March. Yes. Thank you for the reminder. Other items? Well, this has been a very long, productive meeting. We do have to do an executive session. We will not return in open session. I will read my thingamabobber here. I would like a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL C30A subsection 21A3 to discuss, exemption three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do declare. Exemption four, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto, as well as exemption seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. This is the approval of executive session minutes. This will be in here ad nauseam until the school committee all die. And as I said, we will not return to open session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
That was Vice Chair Martini. And a second.
Second.
And we do have to take a roll call vote on this. Member Wall?
Yes.
And I am a yes. And Member Johnson Musad?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
And Member Denise?
Yes.
And that motion passes, and I would also like a motion to close the public session, please.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And we will also take a roll call vote on that. Member Wall?
Yes.
And I am a yes. And Member Johnson Musad?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
And Member Denise?
Yes.
Excellent. We have closed the public session. We are adjourned at 9:03 PM. Thank you all. Let's take it.